So this year it's the select board's turn to go first. Uh, so if you are joining for the school portion, we will be getting to that later. And Nicky, thank you can stay on this zoom for that portion of the meeting. Uh, once we have completed the uh select board's portion of the informational meeting, we will uh place the town meeting in recess. While the select board needs to address some uh housekeeping business in open meeting. That will happen in the zoom. My understanding is if select board determines they need more than a few minutes, they will put that off to a special meeting. Uh, but um presumably that will only take a few minutes. And then we will be transitioning straight into the school board's presentation. Board will be joining us later in the session. So uh for the moment, uh, we will proceed with the uh town warning as currently drafted. Uh, it is a work in progress, as you will see. Uh, but I will go ahead and read the first portion of that warning that will get into the various articles. So the warning reads, uh, the legal voters of the town of Rutland, Vermont, are hereby warned and notified to meet remotely via Zoom conference on Monday, February 28th, 2022. At seven o'clock PM to discuss articles one through 23. At the close of business, the meeting shall recess to 7:00 AM Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. At the town hall in Center Rutland for voters living on the west side of Route 7 and at elementary school and post road for voters on the east side of Route 7. To vote by Australian ballot on articles one through 23 inclusive. Polls will close at 7:00 PM on March 1st, 2022. So article one is, uh, shall the voters authorize the select board to approve $1,071,127 for use toward the operation of the general fund budget? To be offset by anticipated income and local option tax receipts in the state of Vermont, the remainder of which, if any, to be raised by taxes. So with that, uh, we'll proceed to discussion of the general fund budget. And I will turn it over. I will turn it over to Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you all for attending via Zoom. Um, let me start also by thanking my fellow select board members. Uh, John Paul Fagnant, who is center screen here. Joe Donardo, Sharon Russell, and Don Chaffee, who's sitting here in the room with me. Um, it's been an interesting and challenging year. And uh, you have all done remarkably well, and we've kept the town going. So thanks to all of you. Um, remembering that this is an informational meeting. And if there are corrections or additions or deletions, they can be suggested by the select board or those of you in attendance. And um, the final warning may look different. And we think will look different because we've already spotted a couple of things that need to be changed. So we'll go through those. The first item is the general fund budget. Um, as you know, it's primarily funded with the 1% uh sales, sales and use and rooms and meals tax that we have in town. If you, are we ready to put the budget up on the screen? Um, Bill Sweet, our town administrative assistant to the select board, is going to put our general budget up. And the first few rows are um showing what we anticipate for income coming in. First and foremost, you will see is the anticipated 1.1 million for the local option tax. So total anticipated income is um 1,385,600 dollars. And you can see that figure there. Now, we um will, as we set the tax rate, which happens at the close of this fiscal year, we will be looking at these numbers, seeing how close we have come. But we'll be using closer to the actual numbers to actually set the tax rate. So this is a target. Um, it's not necessarily exactly where it's going to be, but that's why we set a tax rate and we have a separate meeting for that. Okay, now we're going to go through the expenses. Probably the overall biggest um increase here is because of the select board's decision to increase our, uh, what we pay our employees by 5.9% cost of living increase. This mirrors what the federal government is doing for social security benefits. And as you know, we have had some inflation and quite a number of, um, you know, you, you've seen it in the grocery store, you've seen it when your oil bill comes. Um, prices are going up. So overall, you will see in all of our budgets, a 5.9% cost of living increase for the wages that we pay our employees. Uh, the bottom of the first page, um, we do show the uh lister, select board, town treasurer, um, that reflects the 5.9% increase. Uh, thank you to Howard Burgess, Marsha Chaffee, and Dean Davis for serving as our listers. Um, and next, at the very bottom of the page and at the top of the page, we are into the town clerk, town treasurer, and assistant town clerk and town treasurer. And again, a big thanks to Carrie Clark and Susan McGee, our office holders there, also reflecting the 5.9% increase. Um, next is administrative assistant to the select board, Bill Sweet. Thank you to him for putting all of this together and running tonight's meeting. If you look down the next few items, board of civil authority, ballot clerks, supplemental office help. Those numbers are somewhat increased because we have three elections this year. We have town meeting election, we have a primary in August, and we have the general elections in November. So it's going to take more BCA members, more ballot clerks, and more help in the town clerk's office to get ready for those elections. About a third of the way down, you will see some changes in the line for uh first constable. The salary's gone down, but um lines for equipment supplies and vehicle have gone up. So there's a net zero um increase there. We have a new first constable. Yeah, we will be voting on first constable as well. But we need to be prepared um to provide the equipment necessary to pay for that position. Uh, Mike Delahanty is presently serving. He was appointed by the select board. And um, you will be voting on the first constable position, although it's not shown on the warning. We've got to add that. Uh, second constable is John Paul Fagnant. Um, his salary line remains the same, slight increase for equipment. Um, and then we have some of the general um costs to run the office here in town hall. And there's no noticeable increases in those. Um, then the last quarter of the page, if you look, there's transfer station costs or uh transfer station attendance this year. Larry Delvinary and Bill Bauer have been doing an outstanding job. And we're very grateful for their work, especially on these very cold days. You will see a salary increase there to reflect the 5.9%. The cost of uh getting rid of hazardous waste have gone up. So that increase uh is $3,000 over last year's budgeted amount. So be aware of that, it's a total of $9,000 now. And waste removal is costing, so that is up by oh another $3,350. So a couple of increases there. On the next page, we have um at the very top, budgeted for increases in utilities in the town office, slight increases on those. Um, we've decreased the amount for town hall maintenance this year. We're concentrating our efforts elsewhere, as you will hear. And we have uh decreased the amount we're budgeting for attorneys. We have settled one of the lawsuits, we settled the lawsuit concerning the construction issues we had at the Center Rutland Fire Station. So fewer attorney's fees we anticipate this year. Uh, municipal retirement is slightly up. Uh, about a third of the way down, storm water is up from 45,000 to 60,000. This was a big increase last year as well. But you'll recall, we combined all of our storm water lines. There was a line in um highway, we combined it with the one in general. So it is a larger overall amount, but it also reflects combined storm water expenditures. Um, so let's see. The most of the other items are remaining relatively the same. We have had a decrease in health insurance, which is a good. Um, and we have a slight increase in new equipment. Going down to planning commission, um, I want to thank the members of the planning commission who have served very well. And we've, we keep tossing extra chores to them. And without flinching, they pick them up and they do a great job. Barbara Nois pulling is our chair. Dana Peterson, Mary Beth Polley, Jerry Sterns, Jim Hall, Sherman Hunter, Howard Burgess, and Andy McCain all deserve our thanks. Um, so that is a very slight increase of um legal fees for the planning commission because they're trying to combine some of our ordinances and give us a unified um effort, a, an ordinance for us to pull together our various land use regulations. Okay, and at the top of the last page, we'll start with fireworks. When we went to renew our fireworks, um, Fourth of July fireworks contract, we were told this year that the amount would be $10,000. Um, we had budgeted for 7,500 last year. So this year, we're going to cover it by using our townwide celebration money. But for next year, we will need to increase that line. Uh, instead of 7,500, we need to increase it to 10,000 to cover the additional cost of fireworks. Um, I don't think people wanted to go without fireworks. We certainly didn't on the select board, so that is a proposed increase there. The county tax um has gone down slightly. That figure is 75,000 as opposed to 80,000. And then if you go down to where it's the, the Cheney Hill um line items are, we sold Cheney Hill School and all of these costs were related to it. But we do retain the Rutland Town Seniors. Um, our thanks to Jim Hall for serving so long and so well as chair, actually chair, vice chair um of that group. And he has turned the reins over to Randy Roberts. So um, we do have, they didn't ask for any money last year. There weren't many activities for the seniors because of COVID. But we are hoping to um, the voters will approve $3,000 for them for this coming year. So down at the bottom, our total budgeted expenses are 1,071,127 dollars plus the 2,500 for the increase in fireworks. That gives us a budgeted increase of slightly over 0.54%, so half a percent. Okay. Back to you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, I will pause for a moment here and see if there are any questions. Okay, um, Ms. Marsha, can I ask, I'm near you. Ms. Marsha, go ahead.
Yes, hi, good evening. I have four questions, I think they'll be pretty quick. Um, the constable, can you, Mary, can you just review with me about the role of the constables? Like, I know JP um does some like with fire, sometimes he visits and sometimes he does some ticketing. And I just didn't know um the kind of the difference between the constable and the, and the police officers. So if you could just review those roles a little bit?
Yes, I will. It was, um, so you're, you're absolutely right. JP um does also cover fire calls. So um, he refers to the blue lights at the fire calls. And that keeps our firefighters safe when there is a fire emergency. So he does traffic duty there. Um, we've heard the townspeople, when they have talked about wanting more enforcement of speed control on our, on our local streets. And so primarily right now, our constables are used for um traffic law enforcement. And we have, um, that's why we were, we were excited to bring our new first constable on board. And JP is also planning on doing speed enforcement. In fact, many times when I call him, he's, he's out in the cruiser. So I can hear the noise in the background. Does that answer that question, Marsha?
Yep, that's perfect, Mary, thank you. Um, recycling was a cut about in half. And I was just curious to know, I know that, you know, hazardous waste was in increase because it costs more, but the recycling was actually decreased. And I was just curious to know about that.
Uh, I'm not sure I have an answer, but is Larry Delvinary on? Uh, why don't I see if I can get that answer for you and uh get back to you?
Thank you. Um, and then there's something called a pound keeper. And I was, I was curious to know what that was. I don't know how to adopt, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's the pound keeper does um take and impound stray animals. Uh, I think it's Paul Williams, right? And yes, that is um, that is a long-recognized old Vermont um office. You, you know, interested in it, you could run for it maybe.
No, thank you, I'm, I'm definitely busy enough as it is. Um, as my last question was, I, I noticed an increase in web service and software uh towards the end of that budget. And I was just curious to know what that, what that pertained to.
Um, we've been doing a number of upgrades for our services here um so that we can store our town records, or a lot of our, our town business on the cloud. And we have also upgraded, we, I think we have laptops on some rotating basis, replacement basis. Um, and of course, the, the cost of software goes up. Um, so I, those are a few things that come to mind for me. Bill Sweet's really the expert. If you want to take a deeper dive, we can put him on.
No, that answers it. I figured it was software and, and you know, that uh cycle of, of computers. But thank you so much, that's it for right now.
Thank you, and thanks for coming.
Okay, thanks, Marsha. Next up, we have Teresa Cooley.
Hi there, can you hear me?
I can, hi Teresa.
Okay, hi, good evening. Um, uh, Marsha actually asked the question that I wanted to ask. I was curious about the constable role. Um, so if there is any speed speeding on streets and whatnot, should we be calling the constables or should we be calling the police? Because I know in the past, we've usually called Ed Dumas, so.
Well, Ed's, Ed's here and so is Ted. Um, all of our officers are going to be doing more, have been doing more speed enforcement. You've also seen the little speed cart that indicates when folks are going too fast. Um, that's out in your neighborhoods now. Um, so it won't matter, you can call the constables or you can call Chief Dumas um at the town office. So either way, they're all on patrol duty when they are able to be.
Okay, is it just that, uh, is it just the constables just do the, the traffic law enforcement? Or do they do other duties as well?
Well, I know um JP has also sworn in as a special officer, police officer. And he's had, um, actually both constables have. So they have trained for other purposes as well. But they are, I think primarily aiming at um the blue light patrol at fire um events for JP and speed enforcement for the rest of the time. That would be our focus.
So the blue light patrol for the fire, so if uh the fire emergency, but he's also part of the fire department as well? So would it not be the fire? He's, he's not in, in a fire, fire department role doing that? He's in the constable role, correct?
He's in the constable role, he's got his truck, he's wearing his constable's uniform.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any more questions on the general fund budget? Don't see any hands raised. If there's anyone on the phone who'd like to chime in, now would be a time. Okay, seeing none, I will move on to the second article. Shall the voters authorize the select board to raise by taxes an amount not to exceed $471,212 used toward the operation of the police fund budget? And I believe now we have Sharon Russell to speak to that budget.
Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I just, as we start, I, I want to say something first before I go through that budget. Um, to the people of Rutland Town, we have four full-time officers. Three are level three, which means they are, are completely certified. Then we have our school resource officer, who we are going to be sending to training to bring her up to level three. We have two constables, one is full-time and is, and is also level three trained. He um, he could jump into any position. We have one at halftime, which we've already discussed, which is John Paul Fagnant. Um, what I need to let folks know is if, if someone is arrested and they're taken into, um, we, we don't have a place to take them at this point. But if they're taken to the Rutland uh city police department, this means it takes two of our officers to go there. One to fill out the report and one to guard the prisoner in the, in the cell that's located down there. Um, so when people say to me, well, how come we don't have police officers out 24/7? Four people can't possibly do that. Even four people with two constables can't do that. Um, you can only stretch them so far. And our guys have been, in my opinion, outstanding and trying to do the best they can. So if you look at your, your sheet, um, social security, we, we don't have any control over. Our police chief, Ed Dumas, um, was, was working under CFAC. CFAC was paying, I believe it was 60, 60,000 towards him. We decided, because so many people wanted more boots on the ground in Rutland Town, that we would pull Ed away from CFAC. Therefore, we did not get that extra money. That's why you see the increase um on the budget. Um, the deputy chief, the second officer, the first officer, all got an increase of $2 an hour pay. Um, we don't have a part-time officer, so that's no longer, um, you know. Our overtime, we went to 7, 7,500. That was an increase because we don't know. Um, I'm sure all of you are aware of the issues we have had down at what was the Holiday Inn is now called the Cortina Inn. Um, our fellas were down there constantly. Um, that seems to be a little bit better, although we got some news today that some of the um, uh outfit that they have down there 24/7 is going to be going into the Rutland um motel, not the Rutland motel, the motel that is in Rutland that also has homeless there. Um, our part-time office staff, which is uh Mrs. Galapo, um, was working 20, I believe 24 hours. We have bums are up to 35. And we're not sure if that's not going to have to go to 40 because we have to have somebody be able to answer. We've been informed, I think Chief Dumas was informed that, if I'm correct, Ed, and you can correct me, um, the state police are no longer going to be doing that for us. So um, we're going to pick, have to pick up the bulk of that. Um, supplies and uniforms are down. Um, training is up because we have another new officer and we have to keep them trained. Um, more, our municipal retirement went up because we have more staff on. So that gives us a budget that will be going up 36.2%. Um, I have Ed on the, is with us also. So you can ask me the questions if I don't have the answers. I'm sure that Ed will be more than glad to do so.
Okay, are there any questions or comments on the police portion of the budget? And yes, Marsha.
Yes, of course, it's always me. Um, uh,
Well, that's not a bad thing, Marsha.
What? Oh, so that's not a bad thing. Good, um, so I just want to make sure the SRO, Sharon, isn't in this budget because it's in the school budget, correct? Or I don't know if anyone can answer that, I?
Well, wait a minute, you're talking about the school resource officer?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, um, she is partially in our budget, so part of it is school, but the training will come out of us.
Right, but her like, uh, probably her salary is not in this, this budget. It's part of the, um, the school budget, I think, right?
You know what, I'm going to have to ask Ed that because I'm not sure what that is.
Mar, Marsha, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you, Ed?
Not too bad. So we bill all the school budget for the time that our, this SRO is at the school.
Okay. Okay.
So in the summer months, she, we take over, but there is a, a certain percentage, I think it's a, I can't exact, I can't tell you the exact percentage, but there's a large percentage that comes from the school budget, not from our budget.
Okay, that's what I was thinking. Um, and um, so I'm, I have to say, I'm extremely happy to hear that we're increasing somebody who's going to answer the phone. I can't express how frustrating it is to call the state police, which I have done on numerous occasions, and how rude they've been to me on the phone. Um, so I'm extremely excited about that. But I'm just curious to know, um, who, how do we contact you if something happens? Do we call the town office? And, and if, and if, and if Lynn is working, she'll answer the phone? Or how, how does that go? I heard, um, I think Teresa mentioned something about calling you, Ed. And so I'm just trying to figure out how that plays out.
Okay, so what's happened is uh, the state police are still dispatching for us. Uh, they've had some issues with uh their staff in the, in the, in their PSAPs, the places where they take our, our phone calls and hand them out to different departments as they come in. And then they've, so they have a staffing issue there. And they've also had an issue with COVID-19 cases. So right now, they have this thing called the level three. If it goes to a level three, then they're not going to dispatch calls, regular, ordinary complaints that you have. They'll, they'll, they'll send them into our office phone. And when Lynn's here, she'll answer the phone and take calls if it's, if it's a non-emergency. Uh, and also you can leave a message. And when we're working, we'll come in, we'll check the messages on the phone to make sure, to see what's there and what we can do to help you out. If it's an emergency and the state police deem it's an emergency, life threatening or whatever, then they will assign one of us or they'll dispatch a trooper to it like they always have. So you, what you want to do is call the 773-9101 like you always have. And if we're working, they'll assign us. And if not, uh, they'll forward you to our cell, our, our phone in the uh office. And it's recorded and we'll be able to uh listen to those messages and answer your calls that way. It may take some time, but we'll get to it as soon as we can.
Perfect, and my last question is, um, is it staggered with patrols? Um, just for instance, a couple of weeks ago, there was an accident right on the corner of my road. And I called the state police and um Billy actually showed up at my house because he heard it over the scanner or something. Um, and it was like a five o'clock in the evening on a Saturday. And um, the response was there was no officers for Rutland Town available. And um, and so we were waiting, hopefully they're going to dispatch a state trooper. So I'm just wondering if there's some um staggering of, of uh patrolling, if you will, or on, on time, on duty, yeah?
We stagger, or a lot of times we stagger the days off. Uh, I usually work five days a week. And sometimes they need me on the weekend, I'll come in if they need me. Um, did you, there, we can't work 24/7 with just one guy, usually one guy on the weekends, Saturday and Sunday. So they usually work 10-hour days when they come in and when they leave.
Okay, I could, yeah, I meant staggered like, you know, if somebody's working like a six to, you know, I don't know, six to six or something. And then somebody else is working maybe like, you know, I don't know, six to midnight or something. And that's what I meant by staggered, not necessarily days, but I see what you're saying um with that. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next up, John Paul.
Yeah, the only point I wanted to make on the police budget, it looks like a large increase. But when we designed- when we designed how we were gonna develop the police department, we were subsidized by CFAC's salary money. So, this was always the cost of our department, but we were able to soften the blow on taxpayers by having that CFAC's position. I just wanted to make that point, so people are aware, thank you.
Thank you. Teresa, go ahead.
So, um, Ed, a question, what Marsha was saying, I think she was trying to ask if somebody's on call. So, if, say, something happens at like Saturday night at three, or Saturday morning at 3:00 AM, do we call the 773-9101 number, do we call 911? Is there somebody that was, you, do you, uh, schedule, uh, everybody to take an on-call shift?
So, no, we're no, we don't have any on-call shifts at this point in time. There's not enough of us to, we'd have to work 24/7, there's just not enough bodies to do that. If you have an emergency and you think it deserves 911, call 911. If you're in doubt, uh, call 911. If you wanna just call the state police, you can call them, the 773-9101. Uh, the good thing about 911, if you call it in and you're in an incident, it will track your location, so we can go there and, and check where you are. It'll come in, wherever the phone call is, they'll be able to track your location and the police can get there eventually.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments on the police budget? I don't see any raised hands, anyone that's on the phone wants to chime in, now would be a good time to do that. Okay, hearing none, seeing none, I will move on to Article 3, which is, shall the voters authorize a select board to raise by taxes in amount not to exceed $1,02,211 for use toward the operation of the highway fund budget? And, I believe Joe DiNardo will be speaking on that topic.
Yep, good evening, everyone, uh, I'm hoping this is coming through and everything's working properly.
You're good.
Uh, so, thank you. Um, the highway budget this year was a, a little bit of a challenge, um. We had a draft budget from our former Road Commissioner Byron Hathaway, who, uh, the board would like to wish all the best in his retirement. And, uh, we worked with that, and in his absence, um, we discussed things with our two highway crew members, uh, Walt Tripp and Jason Bathlon, and they have been a big help with helping us figure out some stuff. Um, our highway budget, uh, is set up a little differently this year. As we go through it, you'll see we've broken down some of the, uh, lines into a little clearer picture of, um, salaries mostly and, and some of the other things. At the top of the budget is the anticipated income from state aid and various state grants. Uh, this is anticipated income, and in the past, we've been very successful at this, so we're hoping this trend will continue in the upcoming year. As we get into the budgeted expenses, you will see there is a winter labor amount, and we have nothing there, and that will show up a little further down in the budget. Um, most of the items here are, uh, fairly, uh, um, straightforward. The de-icer assault, uh, winter equipment rentals, we've broken this down into two columns instead of one. One of them is stuff that the town may need to, uh, rent, and then the new line item is the winter contractors, and this is the amount we pay for the hired, uh, contractors to do our winter maintenance during the winter sessions. Um, we get into some of the utilities, everything is pretty much the same. Um, we added a little bit for, uh, winter sidewalk plumbing. And then we'll get down, you'll see labor. Um, this item now is broken down into three positions. Road Commissioner, full-time position one, full-time position two. And those, uh, salary amounts all reflect the anticipated 5.9 increase for the next fiscal year, and they also show what those, um, were budgeted for other years. So, it's a little bit better set up now and, and we'll be able to understand things as we're going forward. Um, moving down through the page, most of the, uh, items on Page 1 are pretty much, um, reminiscent of what they were last year, our, uh, replacement fund for culverts, um, our retreatment, which is paving, and the, most of the other items. Um, one new line that we'll be adding, probably somewhere in this section, when we, we have a free number, will be a communication line, and that line will be for the lease of radios that are, have been put into the two-town trucks and the loader, and that amount will be of $2,000 that will be added to this budget. That was a late, uh, arrival, and it was something we discussed at the last meeting, so that will be a new line item, and that'll be 2,000. Um, on Page 2, we have the breakdown of the, uh, trucks, the one-ton truck, and that is normally for maintenance and upkeep. We do have a new 550 that was purchased, so there'll be, most of the, uh, repairs, if they are due to, uh, poor construction of our vehicle, will be covered by, uh, the warranty on the vehicle. Their, their wear items are still a responsibility of the town. Uh, moving on, we have, uh, just some small tools, everything is pretty much as before. Um, the vehicle fuel has been put into one item now, where before it was broken down for individual vehicles, this, this is just a easier way to track where, you know, what the town spends for fuel for the, uh, two trucks and the loader and other small equipment. Um, the, any of the, uh, items related to salaries or, uh, Social Security and retirement and stuff like that, those are just calculated according to the increase. And then as we move down through there, um, we just have a, a increase in the engineering services, and this was put in to, um, potentially try to finish up the informational portion of the connector road that the town was trying to get constructed. It would be somewhere between the Aldies Road and Farrell Road. Uh, this project was halted a couple of years back, and we did not receive the data from the work that our engineering firm, so there's some hope that we'll be able to have some funds available. Uh, there is a pretty good chance that going forward with the reconstruction monies the federal government has been putting out there, that if the municipality or entities have what they call shovel-ready projects for this kind of construction, uh, the town would be in a good position to receive one of these grants, and they may be, uh, grants with no repayment or grants with a, some form of match. So, we, we're hoping to have this information available, and if this money does become available, um, we would be able to move forward it at a smaller, uh, cost to the town and increase the, uh, flexibility of that area for the businesses down there. If any of you have ever tried to get out of Ranbury Road on a busy day, you, uh, you understand what we're talking about. Um, and this, you know, brings us to the end of our budget. Um, I don't have an exact number because of the additional amount, um, I don't know if Mary does, uh, because like I say, there's a, an additional amount that was added in there, but we do have a slight increase in the highway budget, um, because of, of the multi-economic factors and the addition of the, uh, new radio line. Thank you.
So, that adds $2,000 to the budget. So, the budgeted expense is $1,009,711, and that is a negative 43.72% increase.
I think there's some more wording on the screen, you subtracted instead of added there, but maybe there's something else that's variance.
Well, it's a minus, it's a minus percentage.
Right, what I added, the 2,000, so the 1,011,000 is the, is the new total.
Right. Oh, right, okay.
That may have been, I, I think that was edited on the screen, actually, as you're going along, so this may, what we're seeing may be current. Okay, so, uh, questions and comments on the highway budget, Teresa?
Yeah, okay. I hear some background, um. Joey, the stormwater, uh, is that absorbed? Because I see that line item doesn't have anything in it, is it, uh, absorbed in the general budget?
Yeah, yes, it is, Teresa, that's, that's the, uh, comment Mary made when she did that. We thought, we did this, uh, either last year or the year before in the budget process to try to make it clear for folks to understand what we were doing. We, it didn't look good when we had the same line items scattered around in a couple of different budgets. And, and just the, one of the notes that I want everybody to be very aware of, um, most of the stormwater stuff that we are doing is not voluntary. This is stuff that we have to do to stay in compliance with the state regulations on stormwater, so there's pretty big engineering cost to design stuff, and then there's the mitigation cost. Uh, so it, it, this is something that we are never gonna get rid of, and, and it, it's, we're, we're just trying to make it easier for folks to understand.
Is there any way to, oh, uh, am I still on?
Okay, go ahead.
Is there any way, is there any loans out there for you to be able to, or low-interest loans? To be able to take advantage of, uh, because you are state-mandated to do these things? That they provide some low-income loans for you to be able to take advantage of?
Uh, at, at times, there are grants, and there may be some loans. Uh, the grants are competitive grants, and th- so the town applies for everything and anything we can get our hands on, and we're always looking for this. Uh, there is some money out there that one of our engineering firms made us aware of that would help us with, uh, some of the other stuff we have to do in town as far as, uh, businesses that have to manage their stormwater off their property. So, there are things out there that we can get funds for to help with some of the business stuff, and I do believe there are some funds out there for the municipal side. Our engineering firm that takes care of our stormwater, they keep us, uh, updated and abreast of anything that comes out, and, and when they're there, we always apply for them. But, but they are competitive grants mostly.
I would imagine, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Marsha, go ahead.
Hi, um, I'm just curious, Joe, um, you have a carryo- carryover balance for 2018, 2019, 2020, but then the proposed carryover balance is blank for this, and I was just curious to know if there's a reason why we have no idea what possibly could be carried over?
Exactly, the, the carryover is determined at the end of the fiscal year, and it's the, and that is the only time. Um, highway budgets are by statute allow, are the only budget in a municipal budget program that are allowed to carry funds over from year to year, and a lot of that has to do with the volatility of things like winters and Mother Nature and stuff, so, um, you won't see anything from some of these until, uh, like, the, the budget that ended in July of 2021, um, after the auditors get done with the books and they figure out all the calculations, make sure everything's done properly, they will assess it, what was actually spent and what's available to be carried over. That, that's just a function of the, uh, the way the highway budget works. The current budget we're in, we will not know if there's anything left over until the end of June. And then once the bu- then once the end of June comes, the auditors take over, they check all the books for the town, and, and they figure out what was actually spent and, and what is available to be, uh, either returned to the, uh, uh, capital improvement fund, or in the case of highway, it can go back into the budget.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on the highway budget? I'm not seeing any raised hands, so anybody on the phone? Okay. I'm hearing or seeing any additional, so I will move on to Article 4, which is, shall the voters authorize a select board to raise by taxes in amount not to exceed $224,164 for use toward the operation of the fire fund budget? And I believe we're going to John Paul for a presentation of the fire fund budget.
Thanks, Matt, um, I just wanna highlight, uh, before I go into the budget, though, I wanna give a shout-out to our fire chief, Chris Clark, and our two assistant chiefs, Mike Carlson, Larry Delveneri, as well as the men and women of our fire department. Um, I do respond to fire calls, and the crew that we have are incredibly dedicated, and to see them out at the calls at all hours of the morning, uh, serving their community like that, it, it's really a privilege. And, and once again, on the fire budget, they've done a masterful job of being able to maintain the costs. If you look at the items now, um, Bill, can you put that budget up, please, thanks? So, over on the left is what we refer to as the line item number, and I'm gonna refer to them as the la- for the last three digits. For example, under vehicle fuel, that's line item 012, and you can see that that's an increase, something beyond our control, as well as electricity, 022, line 022. And then down on line 033, that salary increase reflects the Social Security 5.9% that all town employees are receiving, but that's also reflected in increased Social Security costs on 035. Um, we had to increase our uniforms a little bit, uh, we are starting to get more interest, which is really important, and brings me to a new line item that we've added called daytime wage. And a lot of our people just can't afford to leave their jobs to attend fire activities during the daytime, we're finding it to be a real issue, and we're not alone. I mean, all volunteer fire departments are facing a shortage of personnel, and a lot of these folks are, are young people and they're just raising their families, and so we are starting a line item budget that will allow us to reimburse firefighters who leave their job and don't get paid by their employer, and most don't, but firefighters who leave their job to come fight for the town, that they would get um, a minimum hourly rate, wage, and I believe it's approximately $20 an hour. So, that's what that new line item is for. But, most important thing I wanna talk to you about tonight, and one that I'm very excited about, is, uh, people that have been watching the development of the town infrastructure know that we're kinda behind the eight ball on replacing McKinley Avenue Station. It's been out of compliance for several years, and frankly, we should've started this process last year, but because we were unsure as to how the various aspects of COVID were gonna impact our budget, we held off, and that actually turns out to be a beautiful thing for the town, because we have to replace the structure, and at the same time, we have to have a safe facility for our police to operate. For example, when they take somebody into custody, they've gotta have a secure facility that they can go to, process the person, sometimes they get contaminated if they have to use spray, so there has to be a place for them to get cleaned up. We all knew that that was the requirement of running a police department, um, and I do feel like it was meant to be for this year, because we were able to get a combined facility, and I'll go in, I'll show you what it is. Uh, Bill, if you could put up, please, the site plan first. So, that's the McKinley Avenue site plan for the new facility, and as you can see, there's places for the trucks. I can't point from my remote location, but you can, and I have a blow-up of this that I can show you later, but you can see how it takes advantage of that site, and if you see the contours, you'll see the, the hill on the east side. There's room for other municipal things in the future, if we need it, but this structure, which we're calling the Public Safety Building, is really a minimalist building to serve the needs of the fire department and the police department. Bill, if you could now put up the inside, uh, configuration of the building. So, we hired the best architects in the city, uh, and they've done a lot of public safety buildings, and they were awesome in working with us on this project, and we've had input from the five chiefs, the two police chiefs and the three fire chiefs. And if you look at that diagram, you can see the east elevation. The way the fire trucks are facing is the south elevation. If you look at the east elevation, you'll see there are some garages there, one of which includes what in police terms is called a Sally Port. Now, that Sally Port is the secure area where you Now that Sally port is the secure area where you would drive a subject when you've taken them into custody. As you can see, you go through the Sally port to the different entrances. To the right, you're going into the, uh, processing room and the holding room. And again, those rooms are specified standards that we have to comply with. For example, the holding room has to have a special toilet that doesn't have any, uh, seat on it or anything. It's just a steel toilet, that kind of thing. And we were able to locate the decon room. I referenced earlier, sometimes the officers will get contaminated, where it has equal access to the firefighters who themselves sometimes need to decontaminate. And again, the specifications for that room require a shower, a washer, dryer, toilet and a sink. Um, and so that's designed into that room. Now, if you go to the west elevation of the building, Bill, if you could bring that down just a little bit, please. Okay, so the, really, the main public entrance would be right there on the west side where you see vestibule. You would enter in and if you were going to the fire department, you would go to the right. And if you were going to the police department, you would go to the left. And as you look at the layout of the floor plan, you'll be able to see how we've incorporated just the necessary space for both agencies to operate. Um, we have, uh, there, there's certain requirements for both the police department and the fire department. One of the, uh, requirements for the police department is that only sworn officers can have access to certain portions of that uh, facility. That'll be handled with separate IDs and locks so that only people whose ID have been cleared will be allowed access to that. The, um, without access to the, to that. As you can also see, we've combined the operation of a, kind of a conference room in the front. That'll be available to the police department if they need that. There, there's been incredible cooperation between the two departments in developing this pr, plan. It all started with the need to replace McKinley. And then the economy of scale, we were thrilled that we were able to bring this project in at under five million dollars. The, the architects tell us that we should plan for four million one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. But the good news is the board has been planning for this event since we closed out or completed the Center Rutland Station. We knew that in order to, uh, stay in compliance and and the importance to Rutland Town residents on the compliance issues. Number one, obviously, first responder safety. But more, uh, just as important is some of us who are not in the first responder or not aware of first responder. But our fire service and police service affect our homeowner rates. So insurance companies rate communities on the response time for their fire departments, which is why Rutland Town has always had the most favorable insurance rates because we have a response time because of the two stations. The other thing is property values. People like to see this type of infrastructure. And then finally, as we started this plan almost twenty years ago, this really is the last piece of infrastructure we need to put in place to maintain all of the values that we all want from Rutland Town. Bill, if you could now go to the elevations. One of the ways we're able to keep the cost down is we had a great experience with the highway garage. And highway garage is what's called a pre-engineered garage. So that this part of it right here, the main part of the structure will be all pre-engineered building with the PD portion added on. So this is be the, it's a side entrance where you would go in on the east elevation. This is the elevation that would face McKinley Avenue. And the, uh, this would, I'm sorry, this would face McKinley Avenue down here. So the, uh, as you can see, it, it's not our Center Rutland Station, but it doesn't need to be. We don't need another Center Rutland Station. That was kind of the gateway to our town and folks thought that we ought to make that this nice looking. This will be aesthetically pleasing, but it's not going to be as, it, it, it won't look, frankly, it won't look as fancy as, as Center Rutland Station. But the, the good news about the price tag is we have almost fifty percent of that to pay down in cash because the select board recognizes, and we're all together on this, and, uh, that we need this. We have committed one million two hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of ARPA funds towards this project. And we have saved up in our capital improvement fund in anticipation of this event, eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. So we're really proud to be able to tell you, we're going to have over two million dollars put down on this project, which really keeps the bond payment low for our taxpayers. It's like being able to go in and buy a car with fifty percent down. Your monthly payment's going to be a lot less. Um, and and I know, you know, uh, Don Trophy on our board, he has a lot of experience with construction. And I'm just going to ask him to speak. He did a little investigation for us. Uh, Don, do you want to speak to the square footage cost?
Well, sure, JP, and and thank you. Um, I wanted to give a little historical perspective and you, you've covered, uh, you know, pretty well, some of the reasons why this is happening. Um, but the primary reason is that as long as I've been in this town, I, I, one of the things that's pleased me is a, just as a homeowner and as a taxpayer in the town is that this town has been proactive in keeping the tax rate low for its citizens. And it's been doing it in very creative ways. Um, just to give a little historical perspective, as you mentioned, the, the real need was the need to replace an aging structure, the McKinley Station. Now, this station was built in nineteen sixty-seven, just so, uh, you know, for those of you that, uh, are maybe new to the town, uh, and and don't realize how old it is and how it came about. Um, back in nineteen sixty-seven, the town embarked on a decision to go with their own fire department. And they, we had been contracting with the city for fire protection prior to that. Um, this was possible, first of all, because the Baird family, in the case of the McKinley Station, was generous enough to donate the land. And Fred Gallop was instrumental in that part of the project. And Bob Solari in Center Rutland was instrumental in that part and that land was also donated. Well, you've got your land, now you've got to get buildings. And it was quite a project. The fire department volunteers went out with their pickup trucks and gathered just about every single yard sale and garage sale item that you could think of, holding sales and, and whatever. But, uh, at the time, there were revenue sharing funds. And when they got these stations built, they had to put equipment in it. And the town wisely decided to use revenue sharing funds to purchase very expensive pieces of equipment, the fire engines. Well, they wear out and they rust and and, uh, you got to replace them. So the town, again, wisely decided that it would use a depreciation fund. And the depreciation fund would replace those engines on a schedule so that we could maintain the service to the public and not put an excessive burden on the taxpayers for eight hundred thousand dollars every time a truck needed to be replaced. Uh, and so that's wise planning. Now we get to this situation where this building is fifty-five years old. And people may be wondering, they may have questions as to, well, why do you, why do you need it? Well, first of all, cinder block buildings tend to deteriorate over a period of time. And that's a set period of time. They don't last forever. Um, the, um, so the building is, need, it needs replacement in terms of its, its, uh, its deterioration. Also, that building was built when fire trucks were a certain length. That was fifty-five years ago. Equipment has changed considerably, uh, in the modern day. And so you need a little more space. And and that's what, one of the things that this building, uh, provides. Um, in terms of the, uh, in terms of the funding, people ought to realize, you get your tax bill, I get my tax bill. We should, we should understand that our municipal tax rate is very favorable. And and one of the reasons it's very favorable is because of wise planning and because of the depreciation funds. The, the one point two million of ARPA funds that's been, well, that the board has decided to dedicate to this project, that represents about eleven, or, uh, actually, it represents twelve point two cents on the tax rate. Just in case you want to do some figuring. The eight hundred and fifty-one thousand that's in the capital fund added to that makes the total pretty close to twenty cents on the tax rate. That is being saved from immediate taxpayer expense in one given year. By using the ARPA funds, we're reducing the burden on the taxpayers by eleven cents. That's a lot, especially when you consider that our total municipal budget is about twenty cents of, of the total amount of tax dollars required for the town and the school. So, um, we intend to broaden this discussion, uh, on PEG TV. Um, Ed Dumas, our, our police chief and Chris Clark, our fire chief, uh, will be joining me on PEG TV and and we will advertise and and we'll, 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 we'll put a notification in the circle so that people can, can tune in to that. Uh, which will further be able to, you know, give the people a, um, a good idea and 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 a historical perspective of why, why this is needed. And, uh, it's a valuable project, but it's a necessary project. And, um, while I commend the police department, they're working under some very extreme conditions right now. Uh, and in terms of the safety for the, for the public and the service to the town, uh, this facility is definitely needed.
So let me just add to that, Don, that we have received approval from both the, uh, town accountants and the attorney that our approach in terms of finance in this project has been approved. And on a related matter, um, it's important to note that we've been able to maintain a starting cash of one point five million dollars, which, um, allows us not to have to borrow money in anticipation of taxes to run our government from July first until the first time we collect tax payments. And we've, uh, realized over the course of operating with that much opening cash, we don't need it all. We probably only need about a million to avoid having to pay bank interest on our operating costs for the first part of the fiscal year. And the board has, uh, voted to ask the taxpayers if we can take five hundred thousand dollars of that money and apply it towards the Center Rutland Fire Station bond. And so far, we've been able to take excess money from that project and now this to avoid having to have that bond impact our taxes at all. And I expect that if this station goes as others have, we may have some extra money from this building that we would plan, if that were the case, to turn right around and apply towards the bond payments. As most folks know, we were able to bring Center Rutland in significantly under budget. And I got a pretty sharp pencil on this project and I'm kind of aiming to do that same thing here.
So John Paul, I'd like to, I'd like to interject there, if I may, just for a moment, because I think we've touched on a few different valid items. So I just want to clarify for folks, since we're on the subject, uh, we started with the fire budget. It makes sense to stick on this, but, um, uh, just want to note that item, article twenty-one on the ballot, uh, specifically has to do with the fire station. And so I'd like to go ahead and read that now, so it's clear what we're talking about. Uh, so the question there is, shall the town of Rutland replace the McKinley Avenue Fire Station with a public safety building to house the Rutland Town Fire and Police Departments at a cost not to exceed four million one hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars? And to be funded by Federal American Rescue Plan Act grants of one million two hundred and twenty thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-two cents? And payment of eight hundred and fifty-one thousand two hundred and thirty-one dollars from the town's capital project reserve account. Balance to be financed by a bond in an amount not to exceed two million seventy-four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-eight cents with a payment term not to exceed twenty-five years. Now, uh, we do have some questions and comments coming in already in the chat. And, uh, I would just, uh, note to those who, who are commenting in the chat, if you would like to make your comment or question, um, in the meeting, please raise your hand, I'll recognize you, otherwise I will go ahead and read those from the chat. Um, and while folks are thinking about that, I think JP, you also touched on, I believe, the item that was left off the ballot and maybe on this draft that maybe added to list about items. Is that correct, that Center Rutland, uh, could you explain that again?
So, um, we, our opening cash balance has always been one point five million. And our experience over the last several years is we don't need that much cash to, to open. And let's take the excess cash and apply it towards a current obligation, which, one of which is the Center Rutland Fire Station. So we'll be taking that, putting that money, we're going to ask the voters if we can put that money in a special account and draw it down to make payments on the bond for Center Rutland.
So that will be an additional question on the ballot for voters.
Yes, it will.
So Teresa is here, but I, that's right, go ahead, go ahead, Don.
Uh, yeah, Matt, I just wanted to add to that, that, uh, the, the, uh, it, it will be subject to how the bond is structured when, when we, when we end up finally come up, coming up with a figure for a bonded amount. But obviously, by reducing the, by reducing the bond by that much, you're saving a whole, whole pantload of, uh, of interest money. And there's also the, there's also the, the possibility, depending on how the bond is structured, that if we have excess funds that are dedicated to capital projects, which we have voted in the past to do and where we have this eight hundred and fifty-one thousand that has been accumulated. If that continues to accumulate over a period of time, there isn't any reason that we can't retire that bond in, in a shorter time period, and that's also a possibility. And all of these financial decisions are geared towards relieving the burden on the taxpayers and also at the same time, completing an infrastructure need that pretty much satisfies the major infrastructure needs of the town of Rutland for the long-term future.
Thank you, Don, and thank you also for the historical background. I found that interesting myself, I was wondering about some of those things. Um, I'm going to go to the chat first because we had some comments there earlier. So, um, Kristen Hathaway asks, uh, there seems to be much more than Rutland Town needs. Why is this necessary and how much is this going to cost taxpayers? Touched on that a little bit, but John Paul, I guess I'll throw that question back to you.
Yeah, I don't know how, how she's defining need. We know what the need is and this is the minimum we can do to meet the standards.
Um, we have a, well, two other comments, I guess I'll stick on Kirsten first, first. Um, she states, I didn't say we didn't need something different. I asked why we needed something as described as this project. It seems to be a misuse of ARPA funds that could instead be used for a new business to this town. There are a lot of empty buildings with no tax revenue coming in, which then gets put on the taxes.
Well, my response to that is the board's decision to use the ARPA funds the way they have benefits all taxpayers equally, not just one segment of our population.
Okay, and we have a question from Shelley A., I think, I'm, I'm not sure. I think this is on the police, uh, component of the structure. The question is, have you been in the closet all the officers share? So, I mean, that's a reference to a current closet, I'm not.
Well, um, actually, it's, it's probably a reference to the current space the PD occupies, which is just, it's impossible.
Maybe that, that question might have been, uh, put to Kristen's response, I'm not sure, but.
I think it was a response, I think it was a response back to what Kirsten said.
So everyone, it'd just be easier for me anyways, if, if, if you'd be willing to raise your hands and make the comments a question. So I don't have to interpret, but I want to keep as much of this as possible on the public record if we can. So if we can avoid any back and forth in the chat, that would be ideal. Uh, Teresa?
Yeah, I just, it's, it looks like a beautiful plan. And just going back to the conversation that we had with the police department, there's four full-time officers and there's not 24-hour coverage. So this sounds like it is, I think Kirsten was saying that it seems a little extravagant. I'm thinking it might be a little much for what we are providing right now. Is there thought in the future of increasing the police department to warrant such a space?
So what we're seeing is more and more the Vermont State Police are pulling back the services that they're offering to the town. And if you look at the conference room that's contemplated for the PD, for the troop room, you'll see that there are desk space for up to six officers in there. Because unfortunately, what the state is telling us is that they are not going to be responding to local calls. So yes, Teresa, the long-term plan, I've been working on this now for almost 16 years. The long-term plan is that Rutland Town would eventually have six officers, which would allow, six full-time officers, which would allow the staggering to address some of the hours of operation that you and others have mentioned. Right now, what the PD does with its manpower hours is it knows when the call volume is the loudest for the town, and that's usually during the day. So that they're concentrating their services on where the call volume is the most right now. And that in the future, and I don't know, Teresa, if this is going to be two years from now, three years from now, but we are going to need to add additional officers. We've just been informed that the state police may no longer do our dispatching service for us. Now, we already went through a round of that with them. I think we're fortunate that we have partners, law enforcement partners close by. The sheriff's department has a dispatching and as well as the city. But my point is, is that, yeah, there is room. This is supposed to be a building that serves a community for 60 to 75 years. So there has to, had to be room for additional desks in the police department.
It seems, but it seems like that McKinley Avenue is way out there. So the response time, I'm wondering, because you're saying because the response time Rutland Town's with the fire department, because we've got the two facilities, is exceptional. I'm just wondering what the response time is going to be with the police department way out on McKinley Avenue, where they are now at Town Hall, they're pretty centrally located. It's too bad you didn't have the forthright, the 2020 vision to put them in the Center Rutland facility. It seems like that would make more sense. What's going on with the downtown, with the downstairs of Town Hall?
You know, I wanted to address that because we did, we absolutely did have the police department in mind when we built Center Rutland, our lot wasn't big enough to accommodate. And if we tried to do a standalone for the PD, you're talking at a million and a half for a standalone PD, as small as this one is that we have attached to our building. So that's why we went to, the other benefit to McKinley, it's really only five seconds from Route 7. And you can, you can get, your response times are pretty even between the two stations to different events. Obviously, depending on whether they're east or west events, but we are able to get the east quicker to the east, west quicker to the west, that's the benefit of it. But we were thrilled that we were able to get both of these facilities under one roof on the McKinley Avenue site because if you wanted to look for a different site, we're talking five or 10 years down the road and we'd be buried by then. We wouldn't be able to catch up.
What's happening with downtown, downstairs at Town Hall? I know that there was talk about renovations, so I was wondering what's going on there? Could the police department be moved downstairs?
Teresa, I wanted to, I wanted to address address your previous question in terms of the the strategy and, well, once a decision is made that you're going to go with community policing and you're going to go with your own police department, everyone should understand this. You can have anything that you want or anything that you need as long as you can pay for it. And unfortunately, you know, community policing is expensive. There's no question about it. You could have a full-time police department and you could have 24/7 coverage if you wish to pay for it. Other communities in our region have decided to do that. If you take a look at their budgets, you'll see that they're considerably more than ours is. So it's always a fine balance between what the taxpayers can afford and what you actually, what you need. And I think, you know, our department is making some really, really good judgments in how they're using their time. But as JP explained, we're not building this for just one year or two years, we're building this for the long term. And there is no question in my mind that over a period of time, and I don't know what that is, that the police department will have to be expanded. To what degree? Well, to the degree that the taxpayers wish to support it. And that's as simple as I can get. As far as the downstairs, as far as the downstairs is concerned, we have preliminary ideas on that and we've discussed it. But being that we're taking this project on, we've decided that we would put that on hold until we get this completed. And we're hoping that we can do some preliminary planning, some architectural planning and come up with some ideas. But there's only so much that a town our size can handle at one time. And we're pretty much at our limit right now.
Thank you, you kind of answered my question right there.
Yeah, Teresa, Teresa, Sharon. The other reason with Town Hall and having the police department as we're getting bigger there, it's a safety issue. If you, if you're a mom that's bringing your child in to pay your taxes or whatever, and the PD is bringing somebody in to, if we expanded downstairs, to put him in a holding cell. And they're screaming and yelling profanities and stuff. It's pretty frightening to a child and it's also not very safe. So we had discussed that and that was part of the reason we said that's not the appropriate place to be, to be putting a cell and bringing in somebody who might be dangerous, who might have less than the best of languages. You know, and to answer Kirsten, I don't think there's any price, Kirsten, to put on safety. I think our people, our children deserve the best, the best that we can give. So that's where I stand on that issue.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on either the fire budget or the, or the, I should say, the renovation proposal for fire and police? Seeing none additional. We'll, we're back up to Article 5. We've already covered some of the big down valid items, so take heart, we're moving on. Shall the voters authorize the select board to raise by taxes in an amount not to exceed $165,914 for use toward the operation of the recreation fund budget? And on this topic, I believe we're going back to Don Joffe.
Thank you, Matt. It's indeed a pleasure for me to present this recreation budget. Recreation has always been near and dear to my heart. And if you have, you have it up already, Bill?
Yeah.
The first part of it is the, is the anticipated revenue, and that's always, that's always a guessing game. So it was, it's been 30,000. We've kept it at 30,000, even though it hasn't reached that. But then again, we've been dealing with COVID. Hopefully, when we can get back into a regular schedule, that anticipated revenue should increase. I'm not going to, I'm not going to belabor any of the, any of the, these standard items that haven't changed. As you look down to the budgeted expenses, our recreation directors' salary reflects the same 5.9% that we have allocated as a cost of living increase. The lifeguards, it was, the decision was made to increase that starting amount, starting salary at $14 an hour, which is well within the range that's paid and a couple of dollars above what the state minimums are. And well, I want to take this opportunity, I should have done it at the beginning, but I will now to let you know that we're, we're quite fortunate to have a recreation director that not only does a fantastic job, because we would expect that, but he has a love for this facility and a love for the town of Rutland that goes far beyond the requirements of this position. And you can see that reflected in the budget that he presents, which, which he holds the line on just about everything in there and does a fantastic job. But, okay, so let's go down through it. The only other items that increased, if you go down to the 042, which is telephone, and we've added monitoring. And so that amount went from 1,200 to 3,500. And that increase is for not only security purposes for monitoring, because we want to take care of our facility and we want to make sure that we know what's going on there and we're in touch. But also for the benefit of the users of the facility, including the, including the walking and hiking grounds that we have up there, that includes a Wi-Fi connection so that you can stay in touch. And obviously, that, that also is a safety and security feature in case of accidents or whatever. If you go over to the second page, the items are pretty much standard. The miscellaneous item went from four to 3,000 and, and the food item did the same thing, went down from seven to six. And the reason for that is that Mike carefully planned to be able to use money from that budget and transfer it to allow for the monitoring increase and the wage increases. Excuse me. So the bottom line to the budget, as you can see, is a 1.01% increase, a 1% increase. A fantastic job, especially on a facility of this magnitude. And, and you know, again, to go with a historical perspective and I, and while I'm doing the recreation budget, Matt, I thought we'd go, we will go down to the to the ballot item for the increase of, of the depreciation. And that's item 19 on the ballot. If you wanted to read that now, Matt?
Hey, thanks, Don. So Article 19, shall the town of Rutland establish a reserve fund pursuant to 24 BSA 2804 to be maintained and used as a depreciation account, purchase, repair, and/or maintenance of the recreation equipment? But this depreciation account to be funded annually by taxes raised at a point 0125 per $100 of assessed property valuation. Do you want to speak further, Matt, Don?
The, again, we're talking about the, the very proactive planning that the town of Rutland has done by putting a depreciation account in. I was proud to have presented that way back when we did the facility, knowing that someday it would need replacement. But as, as things happen, things get more expensive and more expensive. And this facility was actually completed in 1980. So, you know, it's 42 years old. There are some leaks in the pool structure someplace. We've done some analysis, Mike has had people up there, professionals looking. We can't really tell where it's coming from and there's no evidence of outcroppings of water. So wherever it's leaking, it is seeping into the ground. But it's something obviously that is of concern, keeping an eye on it. The pool has been resurfaced once at a cost of, I think, a couple hundred thousand. We don't know if it can be resurfaced again or whether we should resurface it again. But we are planning on replacement of the facility sometime, probably within the next 10 years. And we don't think that that's a facility that the town wants to let deteriorate. And that being the case, again, we need to have the funds available so that we don't get to a situation where we're looking at a million and a half or $2 million cost to the, to the town in one given year. So Mike has recommended and the board has approved putting on this ballot and we support it, a half a cent increase in the depreciation fund from, from three quarters of a cent to a cent and a quarter. And the way that breaks down is the, the present depreciation amount of 0.0075, which is three quarters of a cent, generates about $64,000 a year. And we're splitting that, or we're allocating the split of that between the pool replacement and regular building depreciation and/or equipment replacement. We presently have about $300,000 in that depreciation account right now. What we're looking for is a half a cent increase, which would bring us $112,000 annually. And the plan and the policy of the board will be that 100 of that $112,000 annually, we will allocate 100,000 to the pool replacement fund and 12,000 to building and equipment replacement. And we certainly hope that the people will approve the increase, a very reasonable increase in the depreciation amount, which is, well, it's, it's, it would be a cent and a quarter as opposed to 20 cents total for the town's the town's tax rate. The total town municipal tax rate is 20 cents.
Are there any questions or comments on the recreation budget or on the depreciation part? I am not seeing any hands or anything in the chat on that subject. Anyone who's on the phone, wish you could chime in on this, now would be the time. Okay. For moving on, we do have one comment in the chat from the Highway Fund. I don't know if this requires a response, but there's comments from, from Hathaway Farms, so I don't know if that's Byron or somebody else there. But the comment is, having thought about the Highway Budget as presented, I believe a serious mistake has been made. It looks to me that the Highway Budget is headed for a very large deficit within eight to nine months after, within eight to nine months after July 1. The board needs to look at the budget again. Okay, I don't see any other hands on this unless somebody wants to respond. I'm going to spare the moment to that comment, I will move on to the next item.
Oh, I, the only thing I would say to that is it'd be nice if they'd share whatever doubts they have so we can, they can help us in getting it right. If they have some specialized knowledge they want to share, but to just throw out a comment like that is not really helpful to us.
Okay. I'm going to move on now into Okay, um, I'm gonna move on now into. The next section of valid items, which are the nonprofit, uh, funding requests. I'm going to read through these pretty quickly and, and summarize. Um, I do see Randall Smith is with us from the library, so certainly we'll pause on that one, I don't know. If any other, uh, agency representatives are here, but, um, I'll go through a few at a time, then I'll pause and. Um, open it up if there are representatives which can speak on those items or if there are any questions or comments. So we are at number six, which is. Uh, five hundred and thirty-five dollars towards supporting the work of the Vermont Center for Independent Living. Item number seven is six hundred and seventy dollars towards supporting the work of the retired senior volunteer service for RSGP. Number eight is eight hundred dollars towards supporting the work of ARC. And number nine is fifteen hundred dollars towards supporting the work of the Southwestern Vermont Council on Aging. For the elderly citizens of Rutland Town. There any representatives from those organizations or any questions or comments on those topics? Okay, seeing, seeing none, we're, we're very long. Uh, number ten, three thousand dollars towards supporting the work of the Childbirth Advocacy Center. Number eleven, thirty-five hundred dollars for the support of. The partial funding of Marble Valley Regional Transit District for the buses. Public transit service to the residents of town. Number twelve, four thousand fifty-four dollars to the Chamber and Economic Development of the Rutland Region. Along with area businesses and municipalities, the ultimate goal of growing the economy in our region. Number thirteen. Forty-five hundred dollars for the support of Wonderful Kids Museum. And number fourteen, four thousand five hundred and two dollars towards supporting the work of Rutland Mental Health. Do we have any representatives of those agencies, questions or comments? Seeing none, I will keep moving. Number fifteen. Uh, six thousand five hundred dollars towards supporting the work of the Rutland Visiting Nurse Association Hospice. Five hundred dollars, Rutland Area Hospice and six thousand dollars Radna Home and Community Health Services. For two twenty-twenty-two, so I think that's. Six thousand for Radna, five hundred dollars for hospice, for a total of sixty-five hundred is how I interpret that. And I struggle to do that every year, but that's what it says. Number sixteen, fifteen thousand dollars for scholarships to be awarded. To worthy two thousand twenty-two high school graduates of the town of Rutland. Who have resided in the town at least two years and wish to attend institutions of higher learning. Number seventeen, sixteen thousand two hundred and sixteen dollars toward the operation. Operating cost of the regional ambulance service. Uh, number eighteen. Uh. Shall the town of Rutland continue its participation in the Rutland Free Library Association, Inc. And raise by taxes an amount not to exceed ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars. So that would be a good place to pause. Uh, if, uh. See Randall is present, would, uh, you like to speak on that last item?
Um, thanks for the invitation, thank you to the, uh, board and the citizens who've shown up tonight. I'd also like to mention that both of the, uh, Rutland Town representatives, uh, to our board, Joe Burdoloni and Ed Gorzalak are with us this evening. Um, I'll keep it really brief, um, last year anticipating that communities would have difficulty with, uh. Covid-related expenses, we brought in a flatline budget, um. And this year, uh, we are asking for a, a two percent increase. Um, I've heard discussions of, uh, salary increases of five point nine percent, uh, across the board, um. I, if our budget comes in at a two percent increase, we'll be looking at, uh, salary increases of less than half than that. Um, so it's an extremely tight budget, as always, uh, happy to take any questions. And certainly anyone is welcome to reach out to me at the library, uh, we have both, uh. Summarized and full versions of the budget available for the public, um, and any members of the board, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments, uh, either for Randall or the, those other items that we just covered? Okay, seeing none, we'll keep moving. Item nineteen. Uh, let's see, I believe this is when we cut up, covered nineteen, so. Now we're cruising. Item twenty. Okay, this one we have not covered, uh, shall the town of Rutland rescind its vote. To elect its road commissioner for a three-year term of office. And going forward, fill the office of road commissioner by appointment by the select board. Would the board like to speak to this item? Anyone?
Um, I would, this is Joe Donato, and I'd like to speak to that if I could.
Yes, please, Joe, thanks.
Yep, um, this, uh, ballot item has been under consideration since, uh, twenty twenty. When, uh, former road commissioner Byron Hathaway informed us that the term he just left would be his last term. And a plan was devised by him and the board and a structure came up with. To, um, put this question on the ballot in March of twenty-twenty-two. With the anticipation that if it was approved, uh, the town select board would interview and hire. An individual to be the road commissioner and that person would have been working with the. Uh, former road commissioner for approximately one year and get his feet under him and learn, uh, the, uh. Running of the town's highway department and what that entails. Um, with the early retirement of Mr. Hathaway, um, we are still moving forward with this project. And we will be, uh, hoping that the voters will approve this. And this will allow us to, um, interview and hopefully, uh, pick a good candidate. Uh, this is going to be a much tougher transition now and it's, uh, on a very important, um, decision that the town voters. Uh, need to, this, decide on come March, um, this is a, um. Pretty much unified, uh, approach from the select board that we think this is in the best interests of the town. And we are moving forward with the original plan that was proposed during, um, a couple of years of discussion. With our former road commissioner, thank you.
Thank you, Joe, John Paul.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that because a lot of people say to me, well, what's the difference between an elected road commissioner? And an appointed road commissioner, the statute gives a select board control over the road commissioner, the biggest difference. And, uh, Byron was the one who alerted us to this is that. When the select board appoints a, a road foreman or however you want to phrase the position. We can hire from outside of town. If we continue to elect the road commissioner, it can only be filled by a town resident. And have, as we have seen with vacancies in the highway department. There's not a lot of interest in, eh, within our town borders, um. And so it allows us to get a more qualified applicant pool. If the select board appoints, because then the person does not have to be a resident of Rutland Town. I just wanted the people to understand what the difference is.
Thank you. Hi there.
And let me, let me add to that JP, i- it not only gives us the opportunity to hire from a qualified pool. It actually gives us a qualified pool, which we didn't have when we filled this particular position, there was no one. That applied for it and, you know, we have to thank our, our road crew. Uh, and our present foreman and present acting commissioner for stepping forward. And getting us out of a pretty dire situation, a dire predicament. But we had that advertised, Mary, for how long? Two or three weeks at least, and no one applied.
That's a good point, Don, thanks.
Okay, Jim Schultz.
Hello, um, as an elected official to the town, uh, as the town's tax collector for delinquent taxes. I also want to bring forward the point that. It, um, it is in, being in elected position, it really comes down to who gets the most votes. And that decision may not be, um. In line with the fact that the position you're filling is a very important position to everything in the town. And if somebody who is truly not really fully qualified for the job. It may take them a year or two years to get up to speed to be able to do it. If they are even holding the necessary, um, credentials to be able to do the job. Um, leaving your, um, road crew in a position where. Things may go lax or whatever and cause issues. I think that changing it to an appointed position instead of an elected position. Is, uh, very important to keep a smooth transition from one leader to the next of that group. And, uh, thank you for the time to put my opinion forward.
Thank you, Jim, excellent point, don't run for moderator if you can't operate Zoom. Or tell jokes to a muted audience. Uh, I think that's all I see on. That subject. Anyone's on the phone and wants to chime in, now would be the time. Okay, we've covered, uh, Article twenty-one, which was fire police station. Uh, the next two items are related to each other, so I'll read them both. Article twenty-two, show the town of Rutland, pursuant to seven BSA eight sixty-three A one. Permit licensed cannabis retailers as defined by statute to operate in the town of Rutland. And number twenty-three, show the town of Rutland, statute permit cannabis integrated licensees. As defined by statute to operate in the town of Rutland. Do we have a board member who would like to, uh, speak on this subject?
I, I can speak to that, Matt. Um, so what this article does, it, it allows, uh, Rutland Town to take advantage of. What we anticipate in the state's going to be additional retail market now that, uh, cannabis is legal. I visited some facilities in Massachusetts to see how they were run and operated. And in every instance, they're, uh, uh, clean, they're in nice neighborhoods, they seem to be run on a d- daily basis without any trouble at all. Some of them are even hard to find, uh, I, I think that would be our experience here, but. Really frankly, the bottom line is there's going to be a. Opportunity for municipalities to put a tax on this product and. It's anticipated, like if you look at the communities in Massachusetts, some of them are getting as much as seven, eight percent. The municipality itself, uh, on the sale of this product and, uh, that would really, really help stabilize our tax base and reduce taxes. So that's the primary reason why we're, we're not advocating it one way or the other, but we are saying if somebody comes to the town with a good plan. Uh, they ought to be able to do business in our town, just like they're going to be able to do business in the city and, uh, surrounding towns that approve this valid item. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. I'm here, here muted, Teresa.
Sorry about that, as, um, as there's no, uh, zoning in Rutland Town. Would the sales be more or less in the mainstream or could they happen in residential neighborhoods?
The, uh, places in which inquiry has been made are typically along the commercial corridors because they want the exposure to the traffic.
Yeah, you had mentioned that some of the places in Massachusetts were kind of like off the beaten path, so I'm just wondering if they were in like neighborhoods. And if we have to worry about any residential neighborhoods having increased traffic in their neighborhoods.
Yeah, I, I think that our Newton, nuisance ordinance would address that particular. But no, when I said they were discreet or hard to find, they were in little strip malls that didn't, and they didn't really stand out from the Joann Fabrics next to them or the. The, you know, the other stores next to them, that, that's what I meant when they were, when I meant you couldn't, you know, sometimes they were even hard to find.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comments on that subject? Not seeing any. So we'll move on to the last couple of items, Article twenty-four, this is the offices that are up for election this year. Which are moderated for a term of one year, grandeur for term of one year. Select board member for a term of two years, select board member for a term of three years. Lister for a term of three years, cemetery commissioner for a term of three years. School board member for two years and school board member for a term of three years. Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mary.
Um, thank you, uh, to address item twenty-four, missing from that list is. The election of a first constable, the, um, select board appointed an interim first constable, it's necessary to have that. Um, position elected, so that needs to be added to the ballot.
Is that two or three years, Mary?
I don't know. Um, is it two years? I'm advised it's two years, I haven't looked it up. Um, also, missing from this list is highway commissioner. If the previously requested ballot item passes. And the select board is authorized to appoint a highway commissioner, it will not be necessary, of course, to have an election. If we, uh, the voters decide to keep highway commissioner as an elected position. We have two other elections coming up in twenty-twenty-two, one in, um, August for the primaries. And one in November for the general election. And the select board will, um, set one of those for the, um, highway commissioner elected position, should that be necessary.
So, Mary, could you clarify again that timeline, so is the. Is the highway commissioner not, it's, it's appointed now for the current term until when? Or there is no, so?
The, the interim highway commissioner right now is in place until. Um. Either the voters approve the select board appointing a highway commissioner. And then we make a determination after town meeting who will be our appointed highway commissioner. Or if the voters say, um, no, we want to continue as an elected position, then we will set the election for highway commissioner. In either August at the, um, primary election or November at the general election.
Okay, so the current term that's being filled wasn't expiring this March.
That's correct.
Correct, okay. All right, thank you for. Interjecting on that subject. Uh, and Article twenty-five is transact any other necessary legal improper business which may come before said meeting. So that concludes all of the valid items, um. Are there any final comments from the board on any of these? Subjects? Any final, uh, questions or comments from the public? Not seeing any raised hands, so. I think what we're going to do now is we are going to recess the town meeting. And Mary, uh, I will then turn it over to. I will then turn it over to you, uh, for the business the board needs to conduct and you'll have to advise me if you are going to proceed with that, with that now, um, approximately how long, uh, folks might take a break and then we'll be moving into the town school board meeting.
Mr. Moderator, it occurs to me that this is, we're into nearly the second hour, uh, nearly completed the second hour of this meeting. And I believe if the select board took up the matter of the, um, changes to the budget and the warning items that we need to look at um, at our next select board meeting, which is next week, we would still be in time to approve the warning. So I would um, request that we not proceed with the select board meeting or, or recess these items to our next, that's probably the better. I would entertain a motion to recess these items to our select board meeting upcoming on Tuesday.
So moved.
Motion is made?
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of, um, recessing these items to our regular select board meeting next week, please say aye.
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 Um, motion carries. We're recessed. Back to you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mary, and thank you, board. Uh, since we're doing this remotely, we'll just keep right on rolling, almost, except I need to open uh, the attachment I just received for the school district warning. Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and, uh, read the warning here for the Rutland Town School District. The legal voters of the Rutland Town School District here by notified a warrant to be virtually at seven o'clock on Monday, February twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-two, discuss the following matters. To wit, meeting link and dial-in information will be found at US, uh, CSU and our T S calendars at their websites. Okay, number one, to hear and act on the reports of the town of Rutland School District. Number two, to hear and discuss the proposed school district budget. All citizens are invited to attend virtually and provide school board comments and ask questions concerning the proposed school budget. And number three, to transact any other business that may legally come before said meeting. At the close of business, the meeting shall recess to seven AM Tuesday, March first, twenty-twenty-two, at the Town Hall, Center of Rutland. For voters living on the west side of Route seven. In the elementary school gym on Post Road, for voters living on the east side of Route seven. Vote by Australian ballot in Articles one, two, and three. Polls will open at seven AM and close at seven PM. Uh, Articles, number one, shall the voters of the town of Rutland School District appropriate the sum of nine million twenty-eight thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents necessary for the support of its school for the year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-two. It is estimated that this proposed budget approval of the zone education spending of seventeen thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars per equalized pupil. This project, uh, projected spending for equalized pupil is two point five one percent higher than spending for the current year. Number two, to elect their school district officials as required by law. A, school director for term of two years, B, school director for term of three years. Uh, number three, shall general obligation bonds and notes of the Rutland Town School District in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars. Subject to deduction from the receipt of available state and federal grants and aid, the application of reserves and other financial assistance issued for the purpose of financing school building improvements, namely the construction and installation of an elevator at the Rutland Town Elementary School for an estimated cost of two hundred thousand dollars. The legal voters of the Rutland Town School District have been notified that voter qualification registration apps devoting relatives said special meeting shall be as provided in chapters forty-three, fifty-one, and fifty-five, Title seventeen, not sanitized. Uh, which was not been approved and review, uh, for school directors, January eleventh, twenty-twenty-two. And so with that, I will turn this over to one that, I assume you're here somewhere. Looking at my list.
I'm here. Can you hear me back?
Yep, uh, you'll have to speak up a little bit. Go ahead, take it away.
Okay, sorry. Um, yep, we, um, just finished our regular meeting, which, um, we had moved in approved the warning be placed on the ballot for voting on March first. Um, the first order of business for me is, um, to, uh, approval of the agenda. We had a small agenda. Most items have already been taken care of in our regular meeting. Um, the, for my board members, the approval of the warning has already been done. We do not need an executive session. Um, so approval of the amended agenda.
I make the motion to approve the amended agenda?
Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, pre-town meeting budget information. So, um, Article one, of course, is for the budget itself, which as we said is, uh, just over nine billion dollars. Oh my gosh, can you believe that? Um, we do have a tax rate calculation.
I told you to probably.
You did? Okay, Matt, I think you have our tax estimated tax rate calculation that was forwarded to you. I'm not sure if you can share it. I know you don't have Bill.
Let's see.
It might have been under the one attached to the one.
I see the, uh, there was per, uh, per people cost was mentioned and the amount of increase was mentioned in the articles.
Okay, well, okay, there should have been a, um, something else there, but just for the voters, um, and listeners out there.
Okay, um, so, so Louie just sent me the budget info and, uh, whether I can share this, um, is a good question. Let me, you keep talking, I'll work on this.
That's, okay. Um, just to say, um, the breakdown on the increase, majority of the increase over last year is due to tuition. We have the difference between outgoing students and incoming students into high school. There is a sixteen student difference, which in gives us a okay, the tuition is up three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars due to an increase of sixteen new students based on the twenty-two student counts and estimates. So the majority of the increase in this budget is due to student tuition for high school. Okay, the estimated tax, good job, Matt.
Well, you have to, can you tell me, are you seeing right now the, uh, estimated school tax rate right now?
Well, I was maybe.
Okay. How about now?
There it is.
Right, I've got two screens going here and a whole bunch of pop-ups, but I'm trying to.
That's, that's perfect. The one you've got is perfect. So it shows that for the upcoming school year, for the twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three school year, it's nine million twenty-eight dollars. Or, I'm sorry, nine thousand, nine million twenty-eight thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars, um, is up the, uh, four point eight four percent. Education spending is up three point four six percent. Um, at just over, well, eight million six hundred and seventy-five thousand five hundred forty-three. Equalized pupils, this is the only part of this calculation that isn't, um, firm yet.
Depending on the yield.
Oh, I'm sorry. And there is a property yield also. But, um, as far as estimates that they've been recommend, recommended to, to advise to take, our pupil, equalized pupils went from five hundred and two up to five hundred and six equalized students. Ed spending per equalized pupil is now seventeen thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars. That's up two point five one percent. Um, that would actually cause the budget itself or the tax to go down. Property yield is not set firm yet. Um, it's going to depend on the legislature, legislation and what they decide to do with that ninety million dollars. Um, that we've been advised to use the twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven figure. Um, it could be as much as fifteen thousand something if more money of the ninety million are put into, back into the ed spending. Um, they haven't come out with even a percentage that they're thinking of using. Um, this is totally up to the legislature and they probably will not decide this until after March elections. This brings the equalized tax rate to one point three two um, dollars, which is a decrease of ten point three two percent. Last year's equalized tax rate was one four eight, this year is one point three two. CLA went from last year one hundred point oh two percent to this year's ninety-six point thirty-eight percent. Uh, this is again, um, figured by the state. The difference is a three point six four percent decrease, which would raise the tax rate. At the very bottom, you'll see the adjusted tax rate. Last year, the adjusted tax rate was one point four eight dollars. This year would be one point three seven. Again, that is a decrease of six point nine four percent um, from last year. Um, I'm not sure, these figures will, and I apologize for not having a budget out ahead of time for people to review the questions. Um, we just, like I said tonight, finished the, uh, budget up. So, um, I mean, that, that is the main article, of course. The only other one, um, would be, uh, well, Article two is just for elections. Article three is, um, the two hundred thousand dollars being asked for for if, um, the installation and purchase of an elevator. Matt, I'm not sure if anybody has any questions on these.
Well, you've lost most of the audience, but we do still have Marcia Turner.
We usually do, we usually do.
Marcia, go ahead.
Good evening. Hi, Lynn. Um, I, um, I just, I would, I would really, and I've said this before, I would really like to see a breakdown of this budget. The town gives us a really nice breakdown of, um, for each of the, the general budget, the fire, the highway, um, the police and the rec department. Um, and we kind of, kind of can see where that the money is allocated. And I've asked for this a number of years. Uh, we used to have it prior to, uh, the current business manager. We actually had something that was handed out to us, was very difficult to understand, but, um, at least we had something. So I, I, I would really appreciate it if if the school board could really look into doing that. I know that you guys talk about the budget every, every, uh, school board meeting and I do try to make it, but I'm just thinking of other people that might not be able to make it. You know, giving a figure and I understand that most of the increase is through the tuition, but it'd be really nice to see that, that breakdown. So you know, if, um, of, of, uh, staff, uh, like, you know, the, the, um, I'm sorry.
We can, we can put that on our website. If you want a hard copy, um, you can stop by. Huh?
She gets email.
Okay, you can email Louis and he could, um, just send you a copy to the mail. We have it. It's a, uh, well, it's actually six pages long. Um, but we do have it all spelt out. It's, most people get lost in it. Um, but like you said, you, you're used to looking at it. It's not quite as easy, um, to break down like the other budgets are in the town.
Yeah, that'd be perfect if it's, I think you maybe mentioned in the prior that it was on this, uh, going to be on the website. So it'd be great if it was on the website. Uh, and are you talking about the Rutland Town website or are you talking about the GRCSU website, just to be clear?
It would be on the Rutland Town School website.
Perfect. I'll take a peek there. Um, and if I can't find it, um, I will.
Okay, give us, give us a couple of days to get it up there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll look later. Believe me, I got enough on my plate. I'll, I'll wait a couple of days, but thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? There.
Marcia, anything from you or? Sarah, go ahead.
Marcia, I just want to ask a clarifying question. Did you want the pie chart? Cause Louis has done that for us before. Is that where you were referring to? Just the breakdown of like, this is how much money goes to transportation? This is how much money goes to staffing?
I would also like to see that too. I think it's important. I mean, I'm a teacher, so I can definitely see the value in our education and our school budgets, but I think when, when, as a taxpayer, uh, people and we, you know, we've had struggles in the past of passing our school budget. I think it's really important for people to realize that aren't maybe work in the school system or not at the school and realize that you know, we don't have any control. You know, the high school tuition, we have no control over that and that takes up this percentage of our budget. And this percent of their budget is actually the staffing and the, the wages and the benefits that go to staffing, which is the area you can control, but that unfortunately is at the cost of our students if you cut it, which you're not, I'm just saying. Um, so I think it would be really nice to see both, Sarah, actually. And I think the pie chart is a benefit to the taxpayers so that there, it's clear, it's a visual. They can quickly see actually what's, you know, where the money is allocated for each section.
Marcia, if I could say, I do apologize for that. I know that when we had, uh, no COVID and we had our town meetings at the school in the cafeteria, we had handouts of the budgets. Um, so we just, um, because of COVID, I, I do try, we try to keep as many people out of the school as we can, just to make it easier to keep it, um, clean for the children. Um, that is why I know this board, when we made our decision, we meet at the Berksu office in the conference room because that way nobody has to go in and clean the school when we leave. So people are welcome to come here, virtual or in person. And, um, it just keeps our school and our children's staff, faculty, administration a lot safer. But that's why I think in the last few years, you haven't seen it. Um, I didn't even really think about not having a present for you, but I know we used to hand it out at the meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments?
Matt, this is why we, this is why we like to go first.
Well, I don't know. I, there's, there's two sides to that, right?
You got it. Every other year, you got it.
Got to stay up late, but it's sailing crabs. Until, till the end of February.
Yes.
Okay, well, one night, unless you have anything else, I guess we might be done.
I think we are. Matt, thank you very much. Um, thank you to the ones listening out there, the residents. Uh, we do really appreciate our, all of our citizens, the staff, um, administration, faculty, support staff, and of course the students. They have been phenomenal for the last two and a half years, um, and, well, I should say going to be three. And we can just hope and pray for the best. Thank you, Matt.
All right, well, you're welcome. Thank you. Thank you to all the staff that are here and, uh, the couple of members of the public that stuck with us. You're good citizens.
The worst, the worst one ever.
And, uh, I think we'll call that a meeting till the end of February.